All right. Okay. I'd like to call the Spokane City Council meeting of June 7th to order. Madam Clerk, if you would call the roll.
Council President Beggs.
Present.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Present.
Councilmember Mum.
Here.
Councilmember Stratton.
Here.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Present.
Let the record reflect that Councilmember Burke is absent.
All right, welcome, everyone. We have a long meeting tonight because partly we didn't have a meeting last week. So nobody else does the work when we're not here. So that's good. So thank you for being here. And we're going to start out with a proclamation for Pride Month. And I believe Councilmember Wilkerson, joined by Esteban Eravia. So Councilmember Wilkerson.
Thank you, everyone. Whereas Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, and Queer Pride Month commemorates the events of June 1969, when patrons and supporters of the Stonewall Inn in New York City staged an uprising to resist the police harassment and persecution to which LGBTQ Americans were commonly subjected, and marked the beginnings of a movement to outlaw discriminatory laws and practices against LGBTQ Americans and achieve equal justice and equal opportunity for LGBTQ Americans. And whereas Spokane Pride, a volunteer organization promotes and empowers visible diversity for Spokane's lesbians, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and citizens with identities beyond the binaries, LGBTQIA+, and through the supportive education and annual collaborative events, provides progressive cultural opportunities and experiences for the greater Inland Northwest community. And whereas the city of Spokane acknowledges the value and dignity of each person and appreciates the cultural, civic, economic contributions of the LGBTQ+ community, which strengthens our social well-being. Now therefore, I, Nadine Woodward, Mayor of the City of Spokane, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, do hereby proclaim June 2021 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Trans, and Queer Plus Pride Month in Spokane, and urge residents to recognize the contributions made by members of the LGBTQ+ community, and to actively promote the principles of equality, liberty, and justice. Thank you for being with us this evening. I'll turn it over to you, Esteban, for words, please.
Yeah, thank you so, so much. I think in the last year, it's pretty easy for us to understand that love draws us to care for one another. It creates a sense of belonging and mattering for all people, regardless of who they are and where they come from. And so to have the opportunity as a city and as an organization to celebrate those who are LGBTQIA2S+ this month truly is significant. And so we thank you for that recognition. I think I also want to make sure that I say that as we enter into this month, may we also be challenged to unlearn and relearn what it means for us to create an inclusive city, an inclusive Spokane. We have the opportunity now to really rethink and reimagine what does it look like for us to have a city that is for all people. So this month, we ask and we challenge you to hold that close to your heart. What does it mean to love? And what does it look like for us to play out love in real time for all people? So thank you so much, and we look forward to celebrating Pride Month with you. Happy Pride, everyone.
Thank you. Happy Pride. And we all belong. Thanks for showing us that way to live, that we all belong in the city of Spokane. So glad to have you here. Next, we're going to move to a salutation. Councilmember Mum is going to read-
The President, I think you're on mute.
You're on mute.
All right. Sorry. I wanted to say that we all belong. And thank you, Esteban, for demonstrating that principle, that in Spokane, we all belong. And now we will turn to Councilmember Mum to read a salutation to John Dietzmann. And welcome, John. And Councilmember Mum, take it away.
Hi there. This is a salutation that's signed by our Council President, Brian Beggs. And I think he asked me to read it because John is one of my neighbors and lives in my district, and we've served together for many, many years. And I'm very excited to read this to you, John, tonight. Saluting the public service of John Dietzmann. Whereas the city of Spokane's Transportation Benefit District Board believes accountability to the public is critical to successfully maintain and improve city transportation infrastructure. And whereas accountability requires that citizens are continuously informed and educated on an ongoing basis as TBD-funded activities are considered and implemented. And whereas John Dietzmann has been an active and passionate member and leader on the Citizens' Transportation Advisory Board for nearly six years. And whereas John Dietzmann has also served the city for many years as a plan commissioner, contributing to the future building of Spokane. And whereas John Dietzmann also served for six years as the founding chair of the Plan Commission's Transportation Subcommittee, which advises the city on millions of dollars worth of transportation projects. And whereas John has worked tirelessly in his efforts to review planning and transportation projects and make wise recommendations for prioritization and funding of projects. Now therefore, Brian Beggs, Spokane City Council President, on behalf of the citizens of Spokane, hereby salutes John Dietzmann for his service to the citizens and to the city of Spokane. John, we'd love to hear from you to help shape our community.
Thank you. Council President Beggs and Councilmember Mum, thank you for those kind words. Spokane is the best place that my wife and I have ever lived, and we put down deep roots here. I've worked with many people through the years and efforts for the city. I feel fortunate to have found ways to serve and make a contribution to this fine community. And these numerous people I've worked with include numerous other citizens, volunteers, city council members, city staff from various departments, including planning and integrated capital, the legal department, and of course, the street department. And I want to thank all of them for their dedication to the task of preserving the good things, the many good things about Spokane, and finding wise and cost-effective solutions to its problems. So thank you again for this honor.
Don't be a stranger.
Yep. Thank you, John, for all your wisdom and service. We really appreciate it, and the city will not be the same but for your service. So thank you so much. I don't believe we have any boards and commission appointments, so that brings us to the legislative agenda. And I'll just note, we did make a few changes along the way at our 3:30 session, and we'll just keep you up to date on that. We had a few people, well, it looks like we have two people who've signed up. Nicolette Ockletree signed up for several ordinances and then open form. And it looks like someone by the name of Marcia didn't sign up for any ordinances, so I'm thinking open form. But, oh, so anyway, just wanted to let people know that. But we have another little promo for pop-up vaccination clinics that our fire department is holding in our neighborhoods. And Councilmember Mum, I think you were going to narrate this.
Oh, happy to do it. It doesn't matter to me. Let's go to the next slide. We were really excited about these vaccination clinics we kicked off last week. We want to show you the dates that are coming up this week. And if you could forward to the next slide. We had nearly 20 people in the first hour at both vaccination sites, out at Station 8 and then at Station 17. And then we also held one, I believe it was at Station 9 on the South Hill. And these are our firefighters and paramedics and EMTs who are giving you free vaccination, either the Johnson &amp; Johnson or the Pfizer. And I don't have control of the slides, so if you can go to the next one, it should show the date.
Yep, she's trying. She's working on it.
She's working on it. I can still tell you about it. And it's really great because we ran into some people who, Mum had already had her shot, and she brought her two boys, and they were over the age of 12, and they were able to get their vaccinations. And they were pretty proud that they were pretty brave, and they said it didn't hurt as bad as they thought it was going to. And also, we had a businessman who said he just travels and is too busy, and he's so thankful that he could just drive in there and do it. There was really no reason other than he had just been really busy and thanked us for that. And we are also going to try to put one of these together for our 2,000 employees so they can have a drive-up, a vaccination spot. We don't, I don't know if we have the date for that yet. But since we're one of the largest employers, we have a responsibility, I believe, to make sure we offer the vaccine so we can get our services up and running and people can come back to work. So here's your dates and where the locations are going to be. These are the three fire stations. Fire Station 9 on the South Hill, 17th and Bernard, and then we have the one out east on 1608 North Rebecca. They have a nice shaded grassy area. And then District 3, it's right by the little pocket park there, Fire Station 17. And can you get to the next slide, which actually has the dates?
No.
No.
We're having a problem with it. And just in case people are looking, the districts are off. The first says District 1 is really District 2, and the District 2 is really District 1. But there's a place for everyone. It looks like there's a phone number, 1-800-525-0127. 1-800-525-0127.
There was one today. And I'll tell you what, maybe if we can, we'll put that, try to put it up later on in the meeting, we'll do a little commercial break when we get those dates up. Because it's really important for people to see the dates in time so they know when they can go.
Sounds good. All right. Thanks for that. Anyway, I guess we can go to special budget ordinances. Ms. Fister?
Ordinance C 36053, amending ordinance number C 35971, passed by the City Council, December 14, 2020, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations to the various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage, and declared an emergency in appropriating funds in. Ordinance C 36053, combined communication center fund from contractual services, $122,691 to various accounts, same amount. This action allows the addition of three additional civilian full-time employees, all fire communication specialists to support FireCom, and the Spokane Fire Department's 911 and incident volume.
All right, I don't believe we have any community members who want to testify on this, but this is, as the city is taking over the fire dispatch, this staffs us up. For a while, we were very understaffed, and we had to rely on county agencies and pay them a lot of money to do that. And this gets us trained up, and we're actually hiring ahead for some retirement. So we should be in much better shape on that. But is there any council commentary? Yes, Councilmember Mum.
Well, while I was out at the vaccination clinics, I had a lot of folks come up and thank us for supporting our high level of dispatch services and said that it has been working really well. And they really appreciate our support, and they said they're able to talk to victims or people who are on the scene directly and get the information that they need. And they said this is really the way to go, and hopefully we can get the rest of the community to have the same level of service.
Any other comments? All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and Aye. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes seven to zero. And the next two ordinances, we combined into one with a substitute language, and our city clerk is going to read it, since we just put it in there today, the language.
Ordinance number 36054, an ordinance amending ordinance number C 35971, passed by the City Council, December 14, 2020, and entitled. An ordinance adopting the annual budget of the city of Spokane for 2021, making appropriations to various funds of the city of Spokane government for the fiscal year ending December 31, 2021, and providing it shall take effect immediately upon passage and declared an emergency. Whereas subsequent to the adoption of the 2021 budget ordinance, number C 35971, is above entitled, in which passed the City Council, December 14, 2020. It is necessary to make changes in the appropriations of the various funds, which changes could not have been anticipated or known at the time, and making such budget ordinance. And whereas this ordinance has been on file in the city clerk's office for five days now, therefore, the city of Spokane does ordain. Section 1, then in the budget of the American Rescue Plan Fund, in the budget annex thereto, with reference to the American Rescue Plan Fund, the following changes be made. Number 1, increase appropriations by $380,000. A, $220,000 of the appropriation is transferred from the ARP Fund to the Parks and Recreation Fund to support the summer swim program. The ARP Fund appropriation qualifies as part of the general government services program category. B, $160,000 of the appropriation is transferred, excuse me, from the ARP Fund to the Parks Cumulative Reserve Fund for the purpose of replacing playground equipment at the Cannon and Logan Parks. The ARP Fund appropriation qualifies as part of the general government services program category. Section 2, then in the budget of the Parks and Recreation Fund, in the budget annex thereto, excuse me. I've got to have a drink of water. I apologize. I've got a scratch in my throat.
At least you're smart enough to bring water.
Sorry about that. Section 2, then in the budget of the Parks and Recreation Fund, in the budget annex thereto, with reference to the Parks and Recreation Fund, the following changes be made. 1, increase appropriation by $220,000. A, appropriation is provided from a transfer in from the ARP Fund to support the summer swimming program. Section 3, then in the budget of the Park Cumulative Reserve Fund, in the budget annex thereto, with reference to the Park Cumulative Fund, the following changes be made. 1, increase appropriation by $160,000. A, appropriation is provided from a transfer in from the ARP Fund for replacement of playground equipment at the Cannon and Logan Parks. Section 4, it is therefore by the City Council declared that an urgency and emergency exists for making the changes set forth year in. Such urgency and emergency arising from the need to budget for new playground equipment at Cannon Park and Logan Peace Park, and because of such need and urgency and emergency exists at the passage of this ordinance, and also because the same makes an appropriation, it shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its passage.
All right. And we have one community member who asked to testify about this, and that's Nicolette Ockletree. If you're there, Nicolette, if you want to hit star 3. All right. Good evening, Nicolette. Go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes on this issue.
Hello, Council. This is Nicolette Ockletree. This is with respect to $160,000 for the replacement park equipment for Logan Peace Park and Cannon Park. What I don't typically see happening when these kinds of playground equipment upgrades have been made in other Spokane parks in the past is a close attention to the holistic impact these upgrades have on the health and safety of the parks and people. For example, more playground equipment at a splash pad was added to Glass Park a while back. And it's wonderful. It draws a lot more families from the neighborhood and surrounding areas, especially when it was first installed. But this increased traffic makes all those unprotected intersections at every corner of the park even more dangerous. Without stop or yield signs, you find cars gunning it through the intersection while children are playing just feet away. The on-street parking can also make the sight lines even worse and further increase the risk of crossing at these intersections. The kids who live close enough to the park to walk have a hard time getting there safely, again because no crosswalks, no stop signs, no yield signs, and poor sight lines complicated by the lack of traffic calming measures on all four intersections, on all four corners of that park. And lastly, recall, Logan and Cannon Park also have at least one unprotected intersection each, abutting the park property. When we improve neighborhood parks and install new equipment, we have to expect that this will result in more people patronizing these parks. And that's a good thing. But with that comes the responsibility to make related and surrounding improvements to support the health and safety of the citizens who use those parks. Sometimes that means adding more stop signs or trash cans or bathrooms, but historically, those aspects aren't always taken into consideration, or at least not with the same prioritety, when the city approves these plans or expenses with a park upgrade. It might take a more collaborative effort between departments. I urge Council to take these points into consideration whenever they meet with or approve parks department needs and requests for upgrades. More holistic approach to neighborhood park improvements are needed to ensure the overall health and safety of the parks, the people patronizing them, and the neighborhoods in which they're located. And of course, as I've mentioned a few times, I think it would be a great idea to start to integrate more of the trash can animal structures, like the garbage grove, in other parks in Spokane. I think carrying the thematic history of Expo 74 in our other parks in Spokane is an excellent way to connect the city culturally and inculcate a desire in young children to have fun while keeping our public spaces, especially our parks, clean. So hopefully that can be considered too as we make continued improvements to our park areas. Thank you.
Thank you. Any council commentary? Councilmember Mum.
Yes, I'm so thankful that this is finally coming forward. I want to thank Councilmember Stratton, who helped me on this, and Councilmember Wilkerson. We started this project back in October, when we had learned that one of our playground structures was being ripped out because it was so dilapidated that the children were unsafe to play on it. So in one of our most important parks that really need access for kids, the kids didn't have anything between the ages of 5 and 12 in terms of a playground structure. And then also learned that there had been actually a wooden playground structure in Logan Peace Park burned. And the, it was slated to be replaced in a couple of years anyway, but the funding was not going to be in place until almost 2020, I think 2024, '25. So I'm so excited that our P funds can help out the Parks Department at this time, especially coming out of COVID. I've heard that the playground equipment has been purchased and on a state contract, so we got a good deal, and it should be installed before the summer is over. And I hope they invite us for the ribbon.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, just really grateful to be able to support these changes and happy to see investments being made in our parks and aquatics. And so just grateful it's coming forward.
Any other council members? Yeah, we just wanted to thank the Park Board for cooperating with us. We gave them the money, but we still needed their approval, and I think this is a great start. This is really the first American Recovery Plan money that we're spending on our parks, and it really is a nice fit with recovering from the pandemic, as people need to be outside more and exercise and spend time with families and people they care about. So super happy for that. Let's have a formal roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and Aye. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes six to zero for both of those. I said seven to zero last time, but that was wrong because Ms. Burke is not with us. But that passed six to zero, and now we have another special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36056, general fund from unappropriated reserves, $115,000 to police other improvement, same amount. This action allows for refurbishing the training range at the Spokane Police Academy.
All right. And Nicolette Ockletree also requested to testify on this matter. Nicolette, if you want to hit star 3. All right. Go ahead and introduce yourself. You have up to three minutes on this matter. We're not hearing you, Nicolette, if you're there.
Can you hear me now?
I can.
Okay, I don't know. Okay, so it seems to me that a known need for periodic maintenance should never really be a special budget ordinance. If a department knows this kind of expense will recur every few years, they need to budget it in. This is precisely why we have budgets, to set aside funds we know will be needing in the future for expenses we know we will encounter. It's irresponsible and quite frankly unacceptable how many times expenses that ought to have been included in the budget appear as a special budget ordinance. It makes me wonder, and I'm sure I'm not the only one, if the SPO process is from time to time being abused. After all, if a department knowingly leaves out such an expense from the budget with the intention of using the SPO process to pick up that expense later, they have knowingly falsified their needs and, in a serious sense, hidden the true size of their budget requirements in the process. Operating in such a manner is irresponsible, manipulative, and comes at a greater expense in the long run. Of course, City Council will be approving this SPO because maintenance is needed, and I understand that. But it's hard not to see this approach to acquiring funds as strong-arming the Council into approving these expenses that may have been balanced in a different light had they been considered, along with the totality of the Police Department's annual budget request during the budget approval process. I urge Council to be vocal about the burdenless causes, continue to watch for potential abuses of the SPO process, and keep this in mind when reviewing and approving various departments' projected needs in future budgets. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Any council commentary on this matter? Not seeing any. Let's have a formal vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and Aye. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes six to zero. And Madam Clerk, if you could read the next one.
Ordinance C 36057, general fund from unappropriated reserves, $1,100,000 to human services, contractual services, same amount. This action establishes budget authority for building improvements in the operation of the Cannon Street Shelter.
All right. So this sets aside two- All right, so this sets aside $250,000, up to $250,000 for capital expenditures. The Cannon Shelter is going to go to full-time use as shelter and day services, and an RFP is going to be issued for a projected start date of a year-round contractor in September instead of just doing it seasonally. And so this sets aside some money for those operations for the rest of the year. And there is one person that wanted to testify, and that is Nicolette Ockletree. Nicolette, if you'd like to hit star 3. All right, we have you. Go ahead and introduce yourself. You've got up to three minutes.
Hello, Council. I just wanted to reiterate a comment I heard Council President Beggs make during the briefing meeting today, which is that I feel like we need more answers about this building. I did look on the Spokane County Property Search website and was able to see that according to that real estate affidavit, we spent $415,000 on the building at Cannon. And as I recall, maintenance on that building had to start right away and even delayed the original opening date of the very first group that was in Cannon, Jules Helping Hands. Since then, I remember seeing a video posted on the Facebook page of City Council that indicated that that building had also been completely remodeled, and I believe that the contractor said it was basically completely gutted and rebuilt in order to accommodate the facility. And now I'm hearing that there is another 250, it was either 225 or 250 allocated for more capital expenditures on repairs that may be needed. I wonder if that could be taken out of this right now, since it's unclear why those would be needed after so much money has been spent remodeling the building in the first place? And maybe a full accounting of how much it's cost to completely bring that building up to code, so to speak, to be able to accommodate this facility? And digging in of some of these expenses, because when you calculate the cost of administration and the salaries and benefits, you're looking at somewhere between 63% and 70% of that total amount that we've given them just going to salaries and benefits and administration costs. And I wonder how much further that money could actually go if it was put directly into the hands of those impacted, or at least there was a smarter approach to it. So I think we need to consider really investigating this so that we can really fine-tune, comb, see what we're getting for our money, and make sure that those who are being impacted are getting the best services they possibly can. And in the future, going forward, really looking into when we buy these buildings, because this was a terrible building in a terrible location, and we have to learn from this. Thank you.
Thank you, and I did get an email from Chief Financial Officer Tanya. Thank you, and I did get an email from Chief Financial Officer Tanya Wallace that said that between the purchase price and capital improvements to date, we have spent So just to get that out there for people. Councilmember Mum and then Councilmember Cathcart.
Can you dig into that email? Because I think it's important to clarify that the county paid quite a bit of that, wasn't just the city taxpayers.
Yes, I can tell you. So the county did pay $785,000 of that 1.6 million that they got from CARES Act money that they invested. They also invested quite a bit of money to help us buy the new shelter on West Mission, quite a bit more money than that, actually. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, I guess to Nicolette's point, I'm wondering what were those, and maybe Johnny, he's on the line here, maybe he's got some answers. What were those improvements that were done? Because I remember getting that open. It was late quite a bit for construction, and so I'm just wondering what was done then that, and what are we going to do now that's different or that's in addition to that?
Well, part of it, my...
Thank you, Cap.
I was just going to say, part of my recollection, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Perkins, part of my recollection is when we first did the improvements, they were basic improvements, and then the second round of improvements that we did were installing showers. Once we knew we really were going to use it as a long-term shelter, we were, it was installing showers and things like that. But Mr. Perkins could go, and then Councilmember Wilkerson had a comment, I think. Yeah.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Councilmember Cathcart. Let me find out a little bit more specific. I think the Council President's comments about showers and some of the other capital improvements were correct. I want to make sure I get a complete list for you that includes the actual cost. So give me a couple of days, and I'll have that information back to you.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Thank you, Council President. I certainly hear what the community is saying, but when you're in a facility that's ran 24 hours a day with a number of people that are housed at different levels of abilities or disabilities, there will be wear and tear, and there will be maintenance on that, and along with the increase in wages for people who do that work, which is really difficult work. And so I think that they should be compensated fairly. There is a shortage of workers across the board, but especially in this arena, it's extremely challenging to find qualified help to care for the people that we're trying to care for. So I will be in support of this, but I recognize that it is ongoing to maintain a building.
Other council commentary? Yeah, I, so I'm super happy. Council for a few years has been saying, please, let's not do seasonal sheltering, let's do year-round sheltering. And we passed an ordinance last year to say you can't close shelters unless you have provided adequate beds, the same type of beds before, or they're not needed anymore because people just aren't using them. So I like the idea that we're going to year-round shelter at this location. I think that's a big step forward. My sense, easy to say looking backwards, is this building probably wasn't the best, and it was chosen more for its location because it's very isolated away from neighborhoods and things like that, and I think it had more to do with that, which, just to be clear, I'm pretty sure was purchased before this administration came in. But, so I'm hoping that we can do that accounting so that we have a lesson, lesson learned so that when we look for our next shelter, because we're going to need another one at least, that we will choose a little more wisely on it and with a better unified plan. The other lesson on this is that we changed our mind about three times as a city what we were going to use the shelter for. So, but I support us doing it, and it costs, the real cost for sheltering is not really the buildings, it is the staffing, 24/7, security, food, people being able to work in a challenging situation with a group of guests who have a lot of needs and need a lot of compassion. So I fully support spending the money on that. With that, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right, that passes six to zero. And we have another special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36058, general fund from operating transfer in, $14,592 to software maintenance, same amount, and fleet services fund from assistance director, fleet services, $14,592 to operating transfer out, same amount. This action allows for the addition of a debt service leasing module to SIMPRO to track vehicle leases, 50% of which will be funded by fleet.
All right, pretty straightforward. No one from the community has asked to comment on it. Is there any council commentary? All right, we'll have a vote. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, forgot myself. Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right, that passes six to zero. And we have one more special budget ordinance.
Ordinance C 36059, water and hydroelectric services fund from unappropriated reserves, $1,172,000 to construction of FAA, same amount. This action allows for construction of a replacement employee parking lot following the sale of the Triangle Park property at the northeast corner of North Foothills in Nevada.
We don't have any community comment on this. Do we have any council commentary? Councilmember Mum?
I was not a fan of this in the beginning because I thought it was a lot of money, and we really don't provide parking for a lot of our employees, but this is a little bit of a special circumstance. And after a lot of discussion back and forth with staff, the price came way down. There's going to be some improvements that will benefit the neighborhood. I actually grew up in that neighborhood, and boy, could the street use some improvements. And it'll be right next to the new school, and I think it will help with parking, which does improve the neighborhood in the area. And I also think we are investing in property that will improve the price of the property if someday we actually don't use the property anymore. So it's a very old property. I think we've had it, what, a century perhaps? So I will support this.
Any other council commentary? Councilmember Stratton?
Thank you, Councilmember Mum. I was feeling the same way, and I also grew up in that area, so after much thought and much more information, I can support it now, but thank you for your statement.
Any other comments? I did not grow up in that neighborhood, but I had similar feelings, but I tell you, this week, or last week, I was out there for the dedication of the new middle school, Denny Yasuhara Middle School. It was a very exciting event and moment, and his family was there, and to see that neighborhood change, all that housing for all those families are now up now, where that crazy dirt gravel lot where these employees used to. And the school's up, and this kind of old tired water department kind of place is getting spruced up. So it really has changed. It's going to be amazing. So, and I really do appreciate all the work from our city staff to get, I think, like the number was 1.7 million down. Now it's 1.1 million, and Catholic charities really paid for most of that when they bought the Triangle property. So anyway, it turned out much better, and I really appreciate the collaboration with Council and staff on that. With that, let's have a roll call. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Cathcart?
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
Okay, that passed five to one. We're done with special budget ordinances, but we have an emergency ordinance.
Ordinance C 36060, relating to the rates of water services. The Mini and Spokane municipal codes, sections 13.04, .0608, .2022, .2025, .2026, and .2028 of the chapter 13.04, declared an emergency and setting an effective date.
We did not have any requests for community commentary. This is mostly just a technical change. We updated our water rates last year, but there were a couple of sections where we didn't have the right cross-references, so this cures that. Any council commentary? Let's have a vote. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
I think you could use the tail as a voting tool. Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right, that passes six to zero. And we're moving to resolutions and final reading ordinances. I'm going to take the, well, maybe I don't care, there's no one signed up for it. So we'll just go in order. Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 2021-29, approving the Plan Commission's 2021 work plan program deferred from April 26, 2021 agenda.
And we did substitute the attachment today to take into account some of the infill and housing density work that Council anticipates directing the administration to do in response to the Housing Action Plan. So that, those placeholders are there, and we discussed this afternoon that when we finalize our official response to the Housing Action Plan and actually make it into a plan, we'll, if needed, we'll update this attachment as well in the same resolution. Any council commentary? Councilmember Kinnear?
Thank you. I'm a sponsor of this and the Plan Commission liaison. Typically, we would have approved this back in January, February at the latest, so I urge the Council to give the Plan Commission and the Planning Department some certainty by passing this with the knowledge that we can make amendments or changes or additions as we go on and things come up. So it's not set in stone. It's just a guide that they can go work off of so that they have a plan going forward. So I would urge passage of this and make life simpler for our planning people. Thank you.
Councilmember Cathcart and then Councilmember Mum?
Yeah, thank you. I am going to vote for this tonight. I had some concerns, but based on how we have updated the language in the work plan, I think it's at least satisfactory for us to move forward. I appreciate that we've included the review of zoning and densities. I think that's something I've been pushing for quite a bit, and I'm glad that that's in there. And then also that we have a line item for council priorities coming out of the Housing Action Plan, and I think there could be, likely to be some really good items coming from there as well. So based on the changes, the updates, it's something that I can support tonight.
Councilmember Mum?
Yeah, I just want to thank all the Plan Commissioners who volunteer, volunteer their time to work on these projects for us, and then we work hand-in-hand with the administration who funds or works to fund staff to be assigned to these programs that we are prioritizing. And so we all have to work together on it, and with us not getting this done until the middle of the year, it has really put brakes on our growth, the most important time that I can think of coming out of COVID. So the next quarterly meeting that we have with the Plan Commissioners, I hope all of you can attend and put forth some discussions on the points that have kept us from passing this to this time. And then we should draft, as we typically do in our final quarterly meeting, what those priorities are going to look like and pass them in January. So make those decisions much earlier in the year, and that's what we have done over the last two decades. So I know COVID has interrupted a lot of this, but I hope we can get back to our regular pattern. And I also want to mention, even though it's not in there, I have heard, and I think, and Councilmember Stratton has heard as well, from, there are at least four neighborhoods who still have not had their neighborhood plans completed, and this is again slowing down growth, and they have the funding set aside. We can hire consultants to do this, and I still want to have that conversation, even though it's not in our plan, because most of the housing that was anticipated in our comprehensive plan was to be in the centers and corridors areas. So when we aren't building these out, and I've talked to Johnny Perkins, I think we're going to go for a drive and we're going to go look at all these, to have a fuller understanding that we might be able to change some long-term codes, but what's down the road for zoning and that sort of thing, but what's going to really fire up this city and help solve the housing problem more quickly is where it's already allowed. So I look forward to having that discussion with the rest of you on the ARP funds and how we can put those toward rebuilding business areas, mixed-use areas, office, and housing in the centers. So I am so thankful that we are going to have this up tonight and that we can finally pass it and give it to Plan Commission. So thanks for giving me the time.
All right. Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, just to be clear, I mean, this didn't come before us until February of this year, and we heard from our interim planning director that they had no capacity to really even work on additional out of the downtown plan and the Housing Action Plan were completed. So I don't think we've hit the brakes, stalled anything at all. In fact, I think the delay has made this a much better document, and it's going to get us to a much better position as a city.
Any other commentary? All right, let's have a vote. Councilmember Mum?
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Aye.
Council Presidents and I, Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Aye.
All right. Another six to zero. All right, we're about to do a series of resolutions. Essentially, they're going to be up or down votes related to requests for property owners to join our Spokane retail water service area. So these are all properties that are outside our retail water service area, but for a variety of reasons, people would like to be in it. Some of them are in the urban growth area, and some of them are not. We're going to have Eldon Brown, just, we're going to do them one at a time. We're going to do them one at a time, Eldon, and we'll just have you present it real briefly. We've talked about it numerous times in committees, so I think council members are familiar. And nobody from the public has asked to testify. So I feel like we can go through it pretty quickly. So Eldon, the first one is 36, and I think you have the parcel numbers, but 9042, 43, and 44.
Did you want me to read it first?
Oh, sorry. Eldon, I'm sorry, I forgot to have Ms. Fister read the title of it. Then I'll invite you.
Resolution 2020, oh, excuse me. Resolution 2021-36 relating to modification of the city of Spokane's retail water service area to include parcel numbers 35, 354, .9042, .9043, and .9044 deferred from April 26, 2021 agenda.
All right.
Can you see that screen there?
Yep.
Okay, we'll start off with, let's see here, just the map of the overall area.
Can you make it bigger, Eldon?
You need it bigger?
If possible.
He'll probably zoom in when we get closer.
If I can pull it over here a little bit.
You can also do that on your screen, Lori. You can. I know. I know.
I got it up to 200% on mine, is getting to where you can hardly read it.
Okay.
Yeah, I know.
All right.
Better than it was. Thank you.
I'll just go back to this map to start off with. The first resolution is 2021-0036. The applicant in this particular proposal on here, in fact, let me back up here. We did receive 11 applications total here. What we look at when we receive them is we do provide water service. And we look at four items in that regard. And I'll pull our map up here for that. So basically, what we look at is, is water available in a timely and reasonable manner? Do we have sufficient capacity to serve? And are they consistent with the requirements of local plans and regulations? Those are the four things we evaluate them on. So in that, let me get back to our map here. Right, you pulled up parcels here. Okay, the very first one is out off 37th Avenue, just off 37th, east of Glen Rose. This applicant wants to build a facility to provide public parks and recreation services out there. When we went through our map, and I'll bring it back up here again, on this one, I'll put my pointer up here going across there, that particular location complied with three of our four criteria on there. It is outside the UGA on there. That's one of them that, when we look at that scenario, we look at the comp plan. So we did go through the comp plan, basically the capital facilities and utilities, which is CFU 3.6. We did find in there that there is one application that this thing looks like it might comply with when it's outside the UGA. And we do look at the exceptions in that comp plan for providing water service outside the UGA. This one here, when it actually has the ability to provide service to public services out there, that is one item that does comply with CFU 3.6b 2.0C on here. There's an item in there that addresses that. And so we recommend approval of this application based on complying with that actual application. The actual water main is about, I'll go back to our map here. Water main is basically just south of the purple parcels on there. So the main would have to be extended to about 1.5 feet to get it to where it fronts these three parcels. And that will be, of course, done by the applicant on there to do that. But those are the criteria we evaluated this proposal on. It fully complies with everything except being outside the UGA. And we did find one application that looks like it applied to this particular situation. So we did recommend approval based on that. Be happy to answer any further questions to it.
Counselor?
Thanks, Eldon. This is a, yes, they're going to be providing parks and recreation, but it is a private entity. It's not public per se. So you have to be a member, excuse me, a member in order to use this. And so I just want to make sure that everybody understands this. It's not for anybody's use. It's not.
Actually, I think it is intended to be actually for the county parks' use. I don't think it is privately, that you have to have private membership to get into it. I think they provide some services to the county parks department for, you know, probably various types of park and recreation services. I'm not sure that that is correct, that it actually, you have to be a member to do that. I don't know that for sure, though.
I do. It's pretty limited. And so I would say that may not apply in this case when you say parks. I'm going to take issue with that. And it is outside the UGA, which I also have an issue with. I also know that the Glen Rose community not happy about this based on the amount of traffic it would bring to the area. And they're not really set up for this. It's in an outside rural area. And so with any kind of recreation, there's going to be lights and nighttime activities. So I just want council to think about that when they're contemplating approving this.
Councilmember Mum?
Any other questions?
Councilmember Mum?
Yeah, first of all, I think Eldon has one of the most thankless jobs ever. And he always comes to our meetings and he stays till the very end. And Eldon, you are fabulous. I mean, you just do. And to that end, I hope in the future, we don't put you in a position of whether you recommend we approve or not, because I don't want to get in a discussion or debate with you. Because one of the things, and Eldon knows this, I was on the team that helped write 3.6. And so I have a lot of history with this. Just because it might technically comply does not mean that the council has to do it or wants to do it or needs to do it. So I want to say that upfront. And you're doing your job, Eldon. You're doing a good job. But I really don't like to see you put on point of whether you recommend or not. But, you know, that's up to you guys. But I am not going to support this because I don't think it's necessarily timely and reasonable. I don't think we have the infrastructure to facilitate this. As those in the neighborhood know, it's not easy to get to this location, and it would probably dramatically change some traffic patterns. And I think with it being outside the UGA, we need facilities like this that have full services. And so 3.6 has been bandied about for a long time, but it just doesn't meet the level of need for us to include this in the water service area at this time. And I'm happy to discuss 3.6 further with anyone who would like to, if it's very technical.
And I do just want to say too, I just recommend this purely based on the water service perspective, just so you're aware. That's what I'm trying to do.
Councilmember Cathcart?
Yeah, this is one I'm actually a bit conflicted on. I believe that in three or four years, this is going to be added into the urban growth boundary. We're going to see a lot of housing fill in this area. And so I'm conflicted because saying no enables that housing to be built. Saying yes enables a sports facility that our region really, really needs will allow that to get built. So it's very conflicting to me. But ultimately, I don't see inherent concern with the facility proposed. And I don't think I should judge the decision based on applicants. And so I'm going to support this tonight, but I just think that this would be a right area for housing in three or four years when it does get incorporated into the UGA, likely to get incorporated. And so I guess we'll see, based on this vote tonight, what the next steps are.
And Councilmember Wilkerson, I can't see you in the current camera view, so if you have any comments, feel free.
Hi, thank you, Council President. I will not be supporting this. One, it is outside the growth management, but that area is not developed yet. I run that strip frequently, multiple times a week. And I just don't see it ready for prime time at this point in the next year or two or whatever they come back to us with. I know the council will take that under full consideration, but as of tonight, I'll be voting no.
All right. Thank you. And now I can't see you, Councilmember Stratton, if you have any comments. Not hearing any. I am also concerned it's outside the UGA, but I also share Councilmember Cathcart's concern that it might be in a few years. And so the opportunity to lock up some open space in what might be subdivision land is appealing to me, but we don't really have a process for doing that. And we've been discussing having a little more process around this. And I think the water department would like a little more, and I know I would and others for all different reasons. But I would like to see if we do come up with a process, that we have a process for people that if they're outside the UGA, one, they know that it's very unlikely that they're going to be approved unless they enter into some kind of long, permanent easement that will keep the space open. And I think there could be a win for that. There's a few of these that we're going to hear tonight where people want to put one house on five acres. And if they were willing to put an easement to say that would always be there, then we'd have at least a five-acre island there of open space once the subdivisions get approved there. But I don't think it's really fair to just do it on a one-off basis. And we just need to incorporate that into our system, that if that's what you want to pursue, you do that from the beginning, and so it's very uniform, and then we can look at it in those terms. So I'm hoping we'll do that. But for now, I'm not supporting this. But I think everyone's had a chance to comment who wanted to. So let's have a vote. Councilmember Mum?
Nay.
Councilmember Stratton?
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear?
Nay.
Council Presidents and aye. Councilmember Cathcart?
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson?
Nay.
Okay, so it looks like that fails two to four. And we'll have Ms. Fister read the next one, and then we'll have Eldon.
Resolution 2021-37 relating to modification of the city of Spokane's retail water service area to include Spokane County parcel numbers 26212, .9098, .979, .9077, .980, .981, .0409, .0116, .0103, .0104, 325, or, excuse me, 35263, .9141, and authorizing amendment of the city's retail water service area map on file with Washington State Department of Health.
Okay, Eldon, summarize this one for us.
Yeah, the second set here, or the seven applications that we received that were inside the UGA boundary, I'll just pull up the kind of a sample. This is out in the West Plains area, where we had like five of them here, just around Spotted Road, south of I-90. They're all within the UGA boundary out there. So it's just a matter of extending utilities to the site, which would be done by the developers. So this one met all four of our criteria, providing water service to it. And again, we did one resolution to include all these seven parcels. And if you want to look at each of the parcels separately on there, I'd be happy to answer any questions about them.
All right. I don't want to, but if anyone else does, you can tell us. All right, any?
There are two other ones.
Oh, yeah, go ahead.
One of them, one of them is city limits. There are two of them, excuse me, they're not in the city limits, but they're, one of them is around Point 90th Avenue in the Havana area, and the other one's around Indian Trail, two other individual parcels. I'd be happy to pull them up if you want to look at them.
Why don't you pull them up?
Okay. This is one off 9 Mile Road. This is inside the urban growth boundary. Individual has an existing house adjacent to this parcel, and he just wants to connect to a water main that's in 9 Mile Road and build on this existing parcel. But it is inside the urban growth boundary.
Councilmember Kinnear?
And the other one.
Councilmember Kinnear has a question.
The other one.
Yeah. So just so we're clear, just because you say you're going to build a house on a parcel, this gentleman's saying he's going to build one house on this entire piece of property. There's nothing saying that he has to do that. He is free to change his mind, correct?
Absolutely. He could do a plant in there, and again, that would be allowable because he's inside the urban growth boundary. But we wouldn't have to comment on that plant if we utility service too.
Correct. So I just want to make sure everybody's aware, that just because someone says they're going to build one house or they're going to put X, Y, or Z on a parcel or a piece of property, they're not required to do so.
That's correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
The last parcel, yeah. Kind of happy with my trigger finger there. This is the last one that's inside the urban growth boundary. And it's out there east of Havana Street, just on the north side of 29th. This particular individual does want to do a plant in there to actually develop that, what you see in purple. But he is inside the growth boundary. He would have to extend water service. Would come from possibly two directions. You can see up here to the north, we're coming off 29th Avenue to the south. But that would all be addressed as part of the plating process. So he does meet all our criteria as far as being able to provide utility service to it anyway.
Councilmember Mum?
Any questions on this bet?
Yeah, I know it's interesting to see all these little ones all clustered around the city, but I have no heartburn over this. It's what the whole CFU 3.6 was intended to do. This is an urban or planned urban area that has been calculated under our Growth Management Act and Spokane County Planning Principles to absorb for this kind of housing. And it doesn't wreck the other plans. It's very consistent. So I'm happy to support it. And I also want to thank Councilmember Kinnear for bringing up that point. It is what runs with the land and what is the zoning. It's not, you know, I'm sure every person who comes forward and tells us they're only going to use it for this, that's exactly how they believe it at that time. But things do change over time, and this is a commitment forever. So we have to see, when we make these decisions, what would this look like at maximum build out? And how does that impact everything else in all the other plans that we have? So I will be supporting this.
Any other?
Any other questions?
Council commentary?
This is Karen. I have a question.
Yeah.
So first, you're going to be proud of me because I have attended all of these, all of the briefings, and I have all my notes. Because it gets confusing. But I guess what I'd like to know, Eldon, when you say, "We looked at this and staff recommends approval," what does that mean?
What we're doing is recommending that all the criteria from the city perspective has a duty to provide water service. It doesn't mean any more than that on here.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We found some means in there, even on the floor there outside the urban growth boundary. We found an exception in that comprehensive plan that would allow that to take place. That's basically all we're saying in here. We found a, so it's not as much a recommendation, I guess, as actually just finding the means through our policies and procedures on here, which would allow it to take place.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
We kind of, in the law, we call that a prima facie case, which means they have an argument to make. Doesn't mean that they've done it. Yes, Councilmember Kinnear?
Yeah. This has nothing to do with water. Is there a way we could get rid of the echo? It's hard to hear.
All right, I don't know where the echo's coming from. I've got my.
Now it's gone. Oh, no, it's back.
Apparently, it is me, so I will be more careful. Any other commentary on the? Any other commentary on this? So I asked Eldon to group these together, because they're all in the UGA, and they meet all the criteria, so I put the ones that didn't meet the UGA separately. But any more commentary about this one before we vote on this package? Okay, then we'll have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, as I raised at the council president in front of the meeting, I have to abstain on this vote.
Okay. And Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, that passes five to zero with one abstention. All right, we are to Resolution 38.
Resolution 2021-38 relating to modification of the city of Spokane's retail water service area to include parcel number 26231.9207.
All right, Eldon, tell us about this one.
Yeah, this is another one here that met, I'll pull up our little map here again. I go across here, it complies with three of our criteria, but it is outside the UGA. And again, we started looking for something inside CFU 3.6 where this one might qualify. When we kind of looked at, and Mr. Dard was the one that, for a water main, was actually built adjacent to that site in June of 2000, and I think it needed to be there prior to May 31st of 2001, so it actually complied with that, an exception that we found in the CFU 3.6. And so from that basis on there, plus it also is adjacent to the water main, and they're literally just putting a service connection into it. But that was primarily why we found a means to move this one forward with kind of a recommendation that it could actually apply with our regulations, and it could actually be constructed based on our exceptions to the rules, let's put it that way. Now this one here, just a little history on the background of that parcel, and go back to here.
Eldon, isn't this the same one we reviewed last year? Is it any different? Because we were all here.
Yeah, no, well, it was a couple of years ago, but yes.
It was a couple of years ago, I thought it was last year.
So back in 18, I think, on that parcel, just some history to it. On there, what you see in purple in there was, used to include this little area in green down there, and the city actually purchased that piece of that site to put a booster station in there that provides water service to our Kemp tank to the north. And so as part of that sale in there, and I talked to our real estate folks in here that actually purchased that property, and they kind of felt like at some point in time there, there'd been a representation at least, that somebody could certainly tie in from that parcel into our water main, once we purchased this thing from it. It's not in writing, I don't have any of that that I have in writing, but that was just some commentary that came forth on this particular parcel. And again, they want to build one house on the rest of this parcel out here and tie it into that water main. Now, one thing I would like to add on our resolutions that we did put in here, is we are getting real specific on a resolution when you're outside that UGA boundary. We would hold somebody to that one house on that thing if it did get approved, and somebody comes in later and gets put into where they're inside the UGA boundary or whatever, they'd have to modify, in my mind, our resolution to be able to develop more than the one house, because we've got real specific to it. So I just wanted to throw that out for some commentary to it. Yeah.
Can I comment on that? Because it's outside the UGA, it's also outside the city, so we really have no control over whether they build one or 100 houses unless we incorporate that area inside the UGA, but they could do anything they want until we do that. We don't have control.
I think if we actually restricted that by the resolution that says, okay, we put you in the retail water service boundary based on building one house on that thing, I think we could actually hold to that.
So you're saying that we could turn off the water?
Well, I'm just saying they'd have to go through, number one, before they could build more than one house, they'd have to go through a county plating process, like you're talking about, to be able to do that, and they couldn't do that until they get put in the UGA. So in my mind, if these things get approved in a scenario like we're talking about, they're really limited to that, building that one house on this thing. That would be my take, anyway.
Councilmember Mum.
Eldon, is this application any different from the one we rejected previously?
No.
Thank you.
Just providing some more information to it, but nothing different to it.
Because we've had this debate before, thank you.
Yes, we did, yep. Any other questions?
Councilmember Stratton.
Okay, so I've got to make sure I understand this one. So the purple, the highlighted purple area, that's the land we're talking about, right?
Yep.
And that's where they want to build one home, right?
Yep.
That connection is right there, just a little bit outside of that purple area.
Right, they would just tie into that water main that's right adjacent to it.
That's already there.
Yep.
And do they pay more for water, hooking it up like that? Do they pay regular water rates, or do they pay more because they're outside?
I'd have to look at the latest rates, but I think they're a little higher when you're outside the actual city limits.
For the water rate.
You are, it'd be a little higher, yeah. I don't remember exactly what the rate is, but...
Okay, that's all I want, thanks.
Yep. Any other questions?
Any other comments? Then let's have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Nay.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Nay.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay, so it doesn't, doesn't it get a majority? So it's three to three. It fails for tonight. Okay. Next one, Madam Clerk.
Resolution 2021-39 relating to modification of the city of Spokane's retail water service area to include parcel number 26142.9021.
All right, Eldon.
Okay, this one is, yeah, this one is just north of our Kemp water tank. It's a 10-acre parcel. It's a farm up there, people have a beef farm and livestock. The applicants on this one haul water from, I think they have a house inside the city limits, and they actually haul water to that site to run their farm operation today. So they did actually try to drill a well on that site, went down 200-some feet, didn't hit water. They also tried to check with two of our neighbors, Bellevue Water District and Whitler, and neither one of them were interested in trying to provide water service to them. We're the most immediately adjacent one to it, and they didn't actually get a letter of support from the Washington State Department of Health on this one, and that's another criteria that's in our CFU 3.6, that from a safety and health perspective on running that farm, well, they were supported by this letter from, I guess, the Department of Health on here. So that's basically what's going on with that one. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Eldon, we did this one before too, right?
Nope, we didn't do this one. We did one close to it, but not this particular site.
Oh, okay. I seem to remember the beef farm and the livestock, and so, okay.
There was one right adjacent to it, we did do, it wasn't bad.
So when they bought this, it didn't have water on it, so they were choosing to farm, they weren't, isn't this dryland farming? Somebody who's familiar with that, is this dryland farming? So it seems odd that you buy a farm knowing it's dryland and then grow things that require water. So that's a little inconsistent for me, and it is outside the UGA. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Mum.
So, yeah, thanks for reminding me about that one, Councilmember Kinnear. There was one very close to this that was also turned down, because we have thousands of lots next to water mains, thousands and thousands, and so if you use that as the criteria to expand, you will continue to do that in the city where you'll just mushroom, and so that's why CFU 3.6 was put in with very, very narrow criteria, and as you can see, it's surrounded by other rural lots, and if you give one, it's going to be really hard not to say no. I'm concerned, you know, if we do approve something like this, we will have hundreds or more of people saying, hey, you did it for these people, I'm only going to put in one house for right now. So I think that's why we have these policies. So I'm going to support the policy, I'm going to support all the work that's been done on urban growth area, inside and outside, and I'm going to have to stick with what we've done in the past, which is say, no, not right now.
Other commentary? All right, I'll just kind of repeat, just because I think this is, again, a good example of one where if we had a process, they could just put a conservation easement on it and farm to their hearts' delight, and we'd have that open space and agriculture when the urban growth area catches up to it. But we don't have that yet, so hopefully by next year, maybe we'll have that in place. We'll go to a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
I know this is hard votes. Aye, that's a nay, no, it's a day, sorry.
Okay, Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Nay.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Nay.
That one fails two to four. Ms. Fister.
Resolution 2021-40 relating to modification of the city of Spokane's retail water service area to include parcel number 26133.0272.
All right, Eldon, I think this is the last one.
Yeah. Okay, this one here is another one up in the Five Mile area. It's north of Johansson. This is Hawthorne Road that comes right into this site from the west, so it's east of Five Mile Road, and it's a 14-and-a-half-acre parcel. This is one in here that's, an individual there again, wants to build one house on this site, and what we could find in our CFU 3.6 to address this one is it's right adjacent to the UGA boundary, and that's one of the criteria that would allow this one to actually be approved and be in compliance with that policy. But that's what the individual put on his actual application, is he wanted to build one house. I don't know if the intent was truly to stop that road from going through, because this is on Hawthorne, is a road that comes right into the site on here, but there again, we have no control over what an applicant might do down the line. Just in my mind, if these got approved, when they come in here and say they want to build one house, I think we would flat out just restrict them to building one house as part of our approval to get put inside the retail water boundary, and as they went through later on, if they get put in a UGA or something where they can get higher densities on there, I think they'd still have to modify our original resolution to be able to do that. But that's just me talking, I'm not on the lawyer end, so. Anyway, that's what they're proposing on this one.
Councilmember Mum.
So this is just east of Jesse's Bluff, right?
Yes.
And that was one of those big controversial plats that happened oh so long ago, and as you can see, that's a UGA island, right?
Mm-hmm.
So some of you may remember the fight that happened with Spokane County and Future Wise over these UGA islands. So I don't actually consider this a connected UGA, and, you know, there's a freeze right now, there's so much history to this, I can't, it's not worth bringing up, but I will not be supporting this, certainly not because it's next to this strange UGA, which, as you can see, does not even include the whole plat, it's just a very small piece of it, and it was carved out for whatever reason when they were doing it. But it's a decision by the county that was made, and I don't think the city should exacerbate the problem here, so until this all gets sorted out and some more seamless planning happens here, I think we should back off. I'm not going to support adding water at this time.
All right. Any other commentary? Councilmember Stratton, and then Councilmember Cathcart.
I just have a question, Councilmember Mum. So at what point will it get sorted out? Do we know?
Yeah, as soon as there's some changes at the county level. So the growth management hearings boards reversed some of those decisions, and again, there were multiple parcels that were involved, and so what should happen is the UGA should be all connected, not, sorry, that's someone calling me. And so you shouldn't do sort of this hopscotch zoning in a way.
If you want me to pull this one back a little bit, I can probably pull just that UGA boundary up so you can see it, if you want me to do that.
In the yellow?
Yeah, I'll just go ahead and get rid of those other two boundaries so you can see it there.
So 2023.
Okay, if I go through here and... I should just have the UGA boundary up there to now, so like you say, it is kind of isolated up there. You can just see the yellow, and it's not connected all the way through. Wanted you to be able to see that, just the UGA boundary by itself.
Can you explain to me where the future service area?
The future service area is in the blue. In there, the green is the retail water service boundary, and you can see the blue that kind of goes outside the green. So this is, in the blue, the blue goes right across the top of that purple right there, but it is outside the green, which you can kind of see borders right around that parcel.
And isn't the future service area basically almost all of Spokane County?
Most of it. Basically, what you can see in blue in there, all of that blue's in there. If I go in, I can go in there and get rid of it again, you see the blue, but you're right, it's a much bigger boundary, of course, than anything else we have, but there's still a lot of area that's outside the future service boundary too, where we butt up to the other utility providers and stuff, so.
There's a lot of active farmland still in that area.
Anyway, that's what the applicant put on that one, was he wanted to build this one house.
All right, any other? Go ahead.
Can I ask some more questions?
Yes.
So Eldon, I know you're so proud of me here, because I like, I'm reading out the notes. On my notes from the last briefing, I wrote down on this one, water evaluation. Do we have any idea what I was writing that down for?
Well, the only thing I was just going to add in here was, when the guy says one on here, I think it's one unit for five acres up there, I think somebody could almost get three out of this one, even though he says he wants to build one, because I think it's in the zoning up there that would allow one unit per five acres in this particular one. Yeah, Councilmember Mum.
It's actually one for 20. This is rural.
Oh, this is 120 in this area here, it is one for 20? Okay. Then they would be stuck for that one out, so.
They can do clusters, but this is, this is what's tough, because this area, the other two that we looked at too, that's a rural area, and these islands were put in from a county commissioner decision 25 years ago.
Mm-hmm.
But, so what you're saying is only one house on this acreage, right, that we're talking about, the four acres?
Based on the zoning that's there today, it sounds like only one house could go in there, so.
They can cluster and put up to five if they put the houses really close together, instead of like carving it up into five-acre lots. But there's no infrastructure, because it's rural.
They do have, in Hawthorne Road, I didn't show it on there, but there is sewer and water that comes right to that parcel, coming through the Jesse's Bluff plat that you're talking about, so.
So let me just comment, so I think right now there's a retail water service area island in itself, and allowing this to enter the retail water service area would fix that problem, and frankly, this is probably an area that again, is going to be included in an urban growth expansion in the future.
No, no, I disagree with you on that, Michael. I've lived up here 30 years, and it's too expensive, and I would never make a decision based on that. I totally disagree.
But it's contiguous with other residential areas, and I...
You don't have the history that I do on this, you're going to have to trust me on this.
Well, I think one house...
You should make a decision based on that open wish, there's two backgrounds on it.
Hey, everyone, stop, just like... Everyone, stop, just one at a time, please. Let's have one at a time. All right.
Anyway, that concludes my comments.
Okay. Anything more? Councilmember Mum? Okay. Anything from anyone else? All right, we'll have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Nay.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Nay.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm going to trust Councilmember Mum and go nay.
All right. All right. That doesn't pass two to four. All right, Eldon, thank you for your staying with us. This has been a long process, and making it clear for us, appreciate that. And again, I'm hoping we can work with you and Ms. Shadle maybe for the next round to come up with a few more things that I think will make it, are designed to make it easier for the applicant. That's really my main concern, is that the applicant has a good understanding of what's likely to happen, so they don't invest too much time and lawyers and things like that. Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, thank you. Eldon brought this up last year, I think when the water service, retail service area was first brought forward. And that was this idea of some sort of ordinance to just simply make anything that's inside the urban growth boundary part of the water service area. And so to me, something like that would make sense for us to do. That would save Eldon a lot of time and effort, and allow us to focus on just ones that are probably a little bit more controversial.
Yep. Yep, I think that could be part of a whole update of that process, certainly considered, for sure.
Yeah, if you have some language on these, there's stuff there that if you'd like us to look at too, if you can send that to us, we certainly see what we can do with that.
Yeah.
I'm happy to work on that with Councilmember Kinnear, who's the liaison to the planning commission for that.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Any other commentary?
Thank you.
Thank you, Eldon. I don't think you have anything else, so I hope you can turn off your computer and enjoy the rest of your evening.
All right, thanks.
All right, that brings us, we've got some airport resolutions.
Resolution 2021-42, joint resolution with Spokane County in the matter of authorizing Spokane Airport Board to sell property located on a portion of Spokane County Assessor Parcel Number 25295.9050 comprising 4.46 acres of land at Spokane International Airport.
We were briefed on this earlier today. Have some land to sell to businesses that are establishing themselves in the airport corridor. There's no community comment. Any council commentary? Councilmember Wilkerson.
I'm excited for this, activating that land out by the airport for business growth and economic development, so I will be supporting them.
Any other council commentary? All right, let's have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. Passed six to zero. I probably should have done these together, so apologies for that, but if you would read the next one.
Resolution 2021-43, joint resolution with Spokane County in the matter of authorizing the Spokane Airport Board to sell property located on a portion of Spokane County Assessor Parcel Number 25335.9056 comprised of 20 acres of land at Spokane International Airport.
All right, same situation, different buyers, and no community comment. Any further council commentary? Seeing none, we'll have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. That passes six to zero, and I'm going to have Ms. Fister read the next one while I close the shade on the window.
Resolution 2021-44, designating city of Spokane as Hoop Town, USA.
All right, well, I'm particularly fond of this one, because I've played in Hoop Fest quite a bit. Is there any council commentary? All right, we'll go to a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
All right, Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
And Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right. That passes six to zero. We have another resolution that we substituted language on, if you'd like to read the caption.
Resolution 2021-45, establishing the framework guiding principles and timeline for the deployment of funds received from the Federal American Rescue Plan Act.
All right, we don't have any community comment. This is our kickoff of a process to collect ideas from the community and have council prioritize them. And then we have some new software called Thought Exchange, where we can engage the community further. And then we're establishing a recovery work group with the mayor's office, so that we can work closely with the administration on implementation plans and partnerships, perhaps with the school district and the county, and really get the most out of this amazing amount of money, $40.5 million right now, and another $40.5 million in May. So this sets that out. But any council commentary? Councilmember Cathcart.
Yeah, I am going to support this tonight. I'm just grateful that we were able to update the language to put more of an implementation role for that work group and allow the full council to have more input into the upfront investments. So, thank you for that.
Yep. We heard you. Any other commentary people have? Councilmember Wilkerson.
I will be supporting this also, but I'm excited for what Councilman Cathcart said, but also for our commitment to involve the community in the decision-making process of these funds for our city.
Yep. Great. Anything further? Councilmember Mum.
I was also glad to hear that the mayor and her staff are willing to bring forward what they hear in the community, even though it is up to us, and we do set the policy and the budget. But I appreciate that, you know, the mayor's side will also be participating and giving us some feedback before we make our decision.
City Administrator Perkins.
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, council members. Just wanted to reiterate what Councilmember Mum just said. The mayor is very excited. The administration is looking forward to participating in this very open process, making sure that we hear from all communities, all businesses, all residents, as it relates to the disbursement of the ARP funds. This is a great opportunity, exciting moment for Spokane, and we want to take full advantage of working with you, Council President, the council, and more importantly, the community, or as important, the community, to make sure that these funds are really distributed in the appropriate and mindful manner of all of our residents and businesses, and the mayor is in full support of this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, it's time to go to a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
Okay. That passes six to zero. And we have another resolution.
Resolution 2021-46, using power agreement, financial benefits from the waste-to-energy plant to plan for a transition to less-carbon-intensive-waste-management-strategies.
All right, there's no community comment on this. This was a resolution council supported. Our waste-to-energy plant getting a ruling from the Utilities Transportation Commission that a Vista could buy power from us as we burn garbage from longer-than-five-year terms. And by doing so, we'll get more revenue than a five-year term. But we made it clear that we're looking for that extra revenue to finance the transition away from burning garbage because of its greenhouse gas components. And now, under new laws in Washington, we're going to have to start paying penalties for that. So this will use that money to make that transition, make it a little easier on ratepayers. So this just supports that. We've already filed it with an outside lawyer. There's no community comment, as I mentioned, but is there any council commentary? All right, we'll have a vote. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes six to zero. Okay, another resolution.
Resolution 2021-47, setting a hearing before the city council for June 28, 2021 regarding modification of the functions, activities, and/or transportation programs and improvements of the Spokane Transportation Benefit District.
All right, this is an update for, unless you're really a transportation nerd, you're probably not going to notice too much of it. But essentially, we collect money from car tabs for residential street projects. We don't have many funds for residential street projects, so it's really important. What we really want to do is make sure that we've got more people in the public engaged in it, from the neighborhoods, from the Bike Bicycle Advisory Board, and other similar kinds of boards and plans, and that we're really working all together on that. So it just updates that, makes it a little smoother, now that we have our initiative manager for transportation and neighborhood connectivity, Shawna Harshman. She and folks like John Dietzmann helped put this together. They'll keep things going better in the future, and really, again, more transparency and engagement for those community members who want to engage in transportation funding. Is there any council commentary? All right, Councilmember Mum. A vote? Yep.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passes six to zero. We have a resolution that we added to tonight's agenda about watering on even and odd days and between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM. And then we also have an ordinance that we advanced from next week's agenda. If you would like to read the next one, convenient to you, Ms. Fister.
Okay. Resolution number 2021-0050, and this was advanced from the advanced agenda next week to this, tonight's agenda. A resolution terminating the local emergency declared in response to the COVID-19 pandemic and any associated emergency ordinances such as hiring freezes, freezes on contracting for needed city projects, and expenditure and limitations beyond the normal fiscal processes and procedures, and expressing council's desire to immediately commence swift and strong recovery efforts.
Okay, so seems like a long evening, and it's been a long year. We did that emergency declaration quite a while ago, but we've been talking about it and feeling like, hey, we can get beyond that, and we can get fully into recovery. So that would essentially end the mayor's emergency powers, short of declaring a new emergency, if that were to come to pass. No community comment? Any of the sponsors want to say anything? Or have we warned you out?
Almost, not quite. I'm just excited that the city is part of the recovery process going forward. That was the whole intention of this. As the community gets back on the road, the city needs to be right there, walking beside our partners to do the best we can and to help the recovery of the economy.
Any other comment? All right, well, again, it's been a long road together, and I'm glad we're coming out of it, and all the work. Can't tell you how many COVID recovery meetings I've been to, it seems like, in the last year, always early in the morning, and I've seen many of you there as well. All right, we'll have a roll call. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council President Sinay. Councilmember Cathcart.
Aye.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, that passed the six to zero. One more resolution for tonight.
Okay, and this one I'll read in its entire name. Resolution number 2021-51, a resolution encouraging the citizens and businesses within the city of Spokane to adjust watering patterns to every other day, whereas water stewardship is critical to protect our community's water supply, both in the Spokane Valley, Roethrum Prairie, Aquifer, and in the Spokane River; and whereas approximately one-half of the city's water is used for watering landscapes; and whereas the city of Spokane has promoted water stewardship and conservation education efforts for more than a decade, focusing on the demand side of the city's water system; and whereas the city's water department also continues to implement operational and maintenance changes, including efforts to reduce distribution system loss and increase pumping efficiency; and whereas in 2020, the Spokane City Council adopted a water conservation master plan as proposed by the water department; and whereas this master plan focuses on taking the next steps towards water conservation efforts, recognizing the need to both shave the peak and shave the base of water use; and whereas the city's Public Works Division has embraced a water stewardship strategic initiative designed to support the master plan and reduce water use over time; and whereas the city council's Water Resources Conservation Group is filled with many experts and citizens committed to water conservation and is committed to similar water conservation goals; and whereas the Washington State Department of Ecology recently declared a drought in much of the state of Washington, including the city of Spokane; and whereas an every-other-day-odd-even schedule encourages residents located at odd-numbered addresses to irrigate their landscapes on odd-numbered days, while residents located at even-numbered addresses irrigate their landscapes on even-numbered days; and whereas the odd-even watering schedule provides a strategy for citizens to keep their water costs more affordable, especially taking into account recent changes to the residential water use tier structure and anticipated changes to the commercial water use tier structure; and whereas this watering pattern supports landscape health, allows turf and other plants to develop stronger deep-root systems that make them more resilient during hot summer weather and extreme weather events; and whereas odd-even watering schedules also help reduce summertime peak usage of water, are protective of the city's major water resources, and supports a long-term goal of mitigating costly system improvements in the city's water system over time; and whereas the odd-even schedule also works in concert with other watering recommendations that support lower water use, including watering between 6:00 PM and 10:00 AM rather than in the hottest part of the day; and whereas the city's Parks and Recreation Department has agreed to serve as an example of odd-even watering approach with a focus on reducing waters in ways that have a minimal impact to park users' experience; and whereas Parks and Public Works are undertaking an agreement that will allow for annual investments in water-saving and water conservation projects in parks in return for parks' commitment to every-other-day-odd-even or other watering strategies that maintain quality of plat, sports fields, golf, while reducing park strain on the city's water system; and whereas the mayor of Spokane has requested that residents use the odd-even watering schedule and choose to water between 6:00 PM and 10:00 AM; and whereas the mayor of Spokane has requested that city council pass a resolution in support of her requests; and whereas achieving greater water conservation and stewardship in Spokane requires action at all levels, individual, family, neighborhood, community, local, regional, businesses, and utilities, now therefore be it resolved the city of Spokane is encouraging citizens and businesses to voluntarily adopt an every-other-day-odd-even watering schedule between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM to help protect water resources, maintain affordable water rates, support landscaping health, and reduce the need for costly water system expansions over time; be it further resolved that significant benefits can be achieved if residents located at odd-numbered addresses irrigate their landscapes on odd-numbered days between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM, while residents located at even-numbered addresses irrigate their landscapes on even-numbered days, reducing overall demand on a daily basis; be it further resolved that the city will endeavor to lead as an example of odd-even watering schedules for city-owned and managed properties, including parks, and will continue to invest in automated watering systems that can direct watering between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
All right, we don't have any community comment. I want to commend the mayor for encouraging community members, water users, to conserve and... community member water users to conserve and asking council to join her in that request to people. I do have to say, I've finally got my watering system back up, which is always a pain every year after all the damage in the winter, and I found out that I can't really do it on the odd-even day because it's by the day of the week. I can still do it every other day. So it's just kind of a point I really want to make to people is it's not so much doing it exactly right, but just being mindful and doing it however. So if you have a garden, or if you have a certain kind of place that needs more water, that's great, but then if you have another place that doesn't, don't. So we are in a drought according to the state of Washington, and our river is going to need every drop that it can get, and plus, it just, it's going to work better for prices. It costs so much money for us as ratepayers to build the infrastructure for the highest water use in the year, which is usually sometime in the middle of July or early August. That's a huge expense that we pay, and if we can shave that down, we'll really save money. So, that's my sermon on that. Anyone else have any commentary? Councilmember Kinnear.
I would like to thank Cara Odegaard for leading the outreach program, and I'd also like to thank my assistant, Jacobi Byrd, who went to all the neighborhood council meetings educating people on why it's important to conserve water, and people really did get on board, understood why it was important, why it was necessary. That group worked tirelessly to get the word out, to help bring people along and help them understand why this is so important, and it's not just because we're going to save our river, our aquifer, which we are, but it's going to cost people less, and so there's that bottom line that people can relate to. I'd also like to remind people that our deciduous trees still need summer water, so if you're going to stop watering your lawn, let it go brown, you still need to water your deciduous trees. Ponderosa pines don't like summer water, as we found out in the last few windstorms, but keep in mind that our deciduous trees are our asset, and they are valuable, and we do need to protect them and make sure they're taken care of. So, that is my little sermon as well.
All right. All right, any more commentary? Councilmember Mum.
Since we got to talk about water so much tonight, I want to throw out some specifics. It can cost millions of dollars to build a water tower, and really, when we need that capacity most is June, July, and August, and it's really building these multi-million-dollar water towers for super-users, people who use a lot of water. And so, if you can cut back and conserve, and then your neighbor does, and then your neighborhood does, and then the whole area, it'll save millions of dollars to you, and your water rates won't be going up just for the convenience of using it a lot in June and July and August. So, when you're buying your flowers and your shrubs and your trees and your lawn and your planting, think about that. Think about what's the best way, long-term, and how we can all save money together, and, you know, we can save the river too.
And yeah, just a shout-out, if you're interested in that, is Spokanescape. If you just Google Spokanescape, the city has lots of plants that don't need much water that are beautiful and really fit in our environment here. So, all right, let's have, I think, the last roll call of the night. Councilmember Mum.
Aye.
Councilmember Stratton.
Aye.
Councilmember Kinnear.
Aye.
Council Presidents and Aye. Councilmember Cathcart.
Nay.
Councilmember Wilkerson.
Aye.
All right, then that resolution passes five to one. And we have some first reading ordinances. Nobody from the community has signed up to testify, so you can just read all three of them.
Ordinance C.36061 Relating to the Establishment of New Special Revenue Reserve Funds Adopting New Section Spokane Municipal Code Section 7.08.155 and 7.08.156 to Chapter 7.08 of the Spokane Municipal Code. Ordinance C.36062 Changing the Zone from CBE 55 Community Business with a 55-foot height limit to GC 55 General Commercial with a 55-foot height limit for property located on the southeast corner of intersection of Sprague Avenue and Havana Street. The parcel is commonly described as 4110 East Sprague Avenue in the city and county of Spokane, state of Washington by amending the official zoning map. Ordinance C.36063 Repealing the Amusement Device License Fee. Repealing Chapter 8.12 of the Spokane Municipal Code and Requiring the Refunding of Such License Fees Paid in 2020 and 2021. Further action is deferred on the first reading ordinances.
I believe we have two people signed up for open forum, if they're still there. One of them was, I believe, Marsha. If Marsha, if you're there, if you want to hit star three electronically, raise your hand. All right. Marsha, please introduce yourself, and you have up to three minutes.
Okay, I'm in Emerson Garfield area, and I'm happy to see that we're getting a Dollar Tree down in this area. We need more businesses. We lost two because of the shelter over there. And I was listening to this thing. You guys were talking about how much the county put in for this shelter. I understand why the county couldn't use the money to put a shelter out in the county. I don't understand that. There's plenty of land, Indian Trail, Five Mile, South Hill, the valley. There's plenty of land out there. They could have put a shelter, but they chose not to. And you guys allowed this shelter over here, and we have to look at these people walking around here trying to find a place to sleep at night. We have to run them out of our alleys. We have to run them out of our yards, but we have no help. And another thing I really want to say is, how come we don't have the police patrolling the neighborhood? They really need to be in the neighborhood. We had to, we caught a guy trying to get in our car. When we called the police, all they said, well, nothing we can do. They can look in your car. So I told them, if I look in the mayor's car, I bet you the police chief would come. But I'm just saying that we need the police to be patrolling the neighborhood. You don't see them in patrolling neighborhoods, but when I go out toward the Indian Trail area, you see more police out there. Is there more crime out there? Or on the South Hill, I go up on the South Hill, I see the police up there. So this is telling me that evidently there's more crime up there. But this is the Emerson Garfield area. We, obviously, we're not making enough money, tax money for the city to have police patrolling our area. So I would like to know why the police are not patrolling neighborhoods. Can somebody answer that for me?
Yeah, so at open forum, we don't generally answer questions. We listen to your concerns, and we appreciate your concerns, and I don't know if you've heard earlier today, but some of the council members were sharing your concerns for your neighborhood, and I don't have the answer.
Well, I was listening to it. I was listening to it, and we have a problem in this area. We do. We have to look at the homeless people tweaking our streets, and then that apartment building right next to the homeless shelter, that's becoming a drug area. We saw, when I drove by, because I work, I have to drive by there to go to work, we saw fights out there. And where was the police? Not sitting at that shelter.
Yeah.
That place is becoming a drug den, and ever since that shelter got in there, it's ruined our neighborhood. It's totally, Pizza Potline, they have issues with people. Now they have to hire security guards, and I say, if they're going to have to hire security guards, the city should be paying for it, or the county should be paying for it, because the county should not have anything to do with the city, not at all.
Marsha, your time has come to an end. Thanks for hanging around and sharing your thoughts with us.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I got my thing.
All right, take care. And Nicolette, if you're there, you can hit star three. Go ahead, Nicolette, you have up to three minutes.
Thanks, guys. I just wanted to start by saying thank you for all of your hard work. I know it's been a long day. I've been with you since your committee meeting, and so thank you for this opportunity to speak here at the end. As you may remember, my open forum comments over the last few months have included a request for council to facilitate a series of community discussions between the police and the community at large. I stress the need to hold these discussions not only transparently, but openly and well in advance to discussions and the upcoming negotiations between the city and the police guild. I was delighted to hear that the wheels were in motion and that discussions had begun, but I was perturbed to find out that these discussions began without public notice and behind closed doors. Although some representatives from some impacted communities were present, there were many groups from many different communities who were not represented, and some members of which have a daily interaction with police officers and are in dire need of healthy, safe, and open, transparent discussions with the police and the city. There's a real question about whether or not those closed-door meetings, or that closed-door meeting, I should say, violated the spirit of the kind of transparency citizens have been voting and lobbying for time and time again to keep meetings, contract negotiations, and police reform and open and publicly accessible activity. There's also a real opportunity here to test out what a robust community conversation can look like where everyone is involved and given a chance to weigh in. I hope future community conversations are actually open to the entire community and not just those who have been invited to the discussion. If nothing else, closed-door meetings allow the mind to wander and conspiracies about preferential treatment to breed and unverifiable misinformation to spread, not to mention, it sets a bad precedent moving forward as we approach the next round of police guild contract negotiations, which by law will be required to happen openly and transparently. Thank you again for your time, and have a wonderful day.
Thank you. I wanted to note that, you might have seen in the newspaper, but one of our former city council members who served before any of us served, Mr. Brewer from District One, passed away, and I was not living here in Spokane when I left. I left before he joined, and I came back after he was no longer, but he seemed like a remarkable person, and we'll be doing a salutation for him coming up, but I just wanted to note it while it was on people's minds. And then I also just wanted to note that Councilmember Cathcart and his wife welcomed a baby in, and I remember his first name, Atlas, but Michael, could you just introduce him again, his full name to us?
Yeah, it's Atlas Samuel Tran Cathcart.
Yep. Thank you so much. We're so excited for you and Vina and Atlas and just the circle of life, new people. There he is! Yay! Hey, Atlas. Well, that's, that's what it's all about.
We're really excited. Over the moon.
Nice. All right, well, everybody, again, as Nicolette noted, very long day, lots going on, and we have a study session on Thursday, and then city council again next week at our committee meeting at 1:15. Oh, but I meant to do that during the first readings, but Candace, can you please share the screen, or no, Candy Lee is going to share the screen. The vaccine dates. It's not showing up on our... All right.
How would you like to have your vaccination come to you? So here's your dates and times. So we already did the June 4th one, June 8th, tomorrow, 3:00 to 7:00 PM, up on the South Hill, Fire Station 9, 1722 South Bernard Street. You can go onto srhd.org and make a reservation, or just walk up and bring some friends that haven't had their vaccination yet. And then at Firesit 17th, which is out in Indian Trail, that's 5121 West Lowell Avenue, right across from SDCU and next to the Pocket Park with the splash pads. We had a great turnout last week. Come by on the 9th from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. Say hi to our firefighters and EMTs and paramedics and get your free shot.
Okay. All right. Thanks, everybody, and please take care of yourself, and if you can, take care of somebody else. We'll see you around. Take care. Have a good night.